It's good to see so many of you here. And now our meeting will come to order. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. This evening, we are pleased to welcome a candidate for volunteer firefighter, Christopher P. Moscatella. Christopher, please stand so that we can welcome him. Chief Francisco, do you have some body of information?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Chris Moscatella is a graduate of the Gorgon City High School class of 2015 and a 2018 graduate of Maris College. We majored in history and minor in communications. Chris is currently pursuing opportunities in sales, and we're honored to have him join our city volunteer fire department.
Do I have a motion to appoint Christopher P. Moscatella as a volunteer firefighter for the village of Gorgon State?
Aye, ma'am.
A second? All in favor? The motion passed unanimously. At this time, we turn to comments on agenda items from the boardroom heads at our village administrator. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, ma'am. Number fourteen, from the police, requesting permission for myself to go to the U.S. State Police Chiefs Conference in Rochester. The items that will be discussed and trained on is a lot of the recent law changes regarding marijuana legalization, municipal law changes, dairy reform, evidence discovery rules, and use of force law dissection. We're also going to be going over recent court decisions, social media investigations, traffic safety items, and other items that later should be updated on. Number fifteen, parking field seven N. Our office is consulting with some of these proprietors of the businesses and the Chamber of Commerce, and we are asking for two changes in parking hours signage. There's four spots in parking field seven N. It's behind Dunkin' Donuts. The people there frequently go to Dunkin' Donuts, other area stores, and the supermarkets. We're requesting those four two-hour spaces, the one-hour spaces, for quick facilitation of traffic. On the opposite text, we are, there's a double row behind the stores on Franklin Avenue, seven N. Some of those stores need longer parking, and we felt to be appropriate for the second double row, not the first double row, the second double row behind those stores to go from two-hour to three-hour parking. Again, in consult with the traffic commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Benetti in yellow.
Thank you, ma'am. Currently, we don't have anything on the agenda for tonight, but if you want, happily answer any questions from the building department. You have anything to say.
Any questions regarding the present department?
We have approximately about eight hundred and fifty requests to dig right. And when the process of working on that, I have a few interns that are helping us out to gather all the information to send back to the residents.
Does that mean we have the forms outside?
We do, sir.
Okay. Is this a reminder? This form is out there, I say, this almost every single meeting. This is an opportunity, because we've spent over the last three years digitizing all the records. We are giving every single resident the opportunity to actually take the file of the home where you live. So that file, that every single record, every single thing that's been done in your property since the house has been built. So all you have to do is fill out this form, give it to the building department, it's outside, they'll make you pick one up, and then you can obtain that through your house. Is everything digitized? Thank you.
Isn't there a couple of dates?
We have to the end of the year for that program, yes. Just allow adequate time for the building department to gather the many files, yes.
I would imagine that some interesting documents will come up in all the paperwork on certain houses. Some of the older houses?
Some of the older houses, a lot of the archived plans are valuable information, so we want to get that back to the current homeowners.
Well, we could actually cross-reference that with the storyboards of them announced, that we see what was possibly already supplied a long time ago and see if we actually had those papers that that paper were returning. Okay. Chief Francisco?
Thank you, ma'am. The boardroom has three items. First item is item occupational. It's our department position. We have physicals every year. This contract was for three years, started in 2016. We're looking to extend it one year at the same contract. Variables, and just extend it one year to be able to bid on that. So we'll get one approval for that. Second item is the cheese vehicle. We purchased a new cheese vehicle on Bosie's contract, so it's a New York State contract, and we're looking to receive approval to install emergency lights for use. And it's like custom equipment, a cheese vehicle with three bid bids. We picked the lowest bidder, we'd like approval for that. And the old ladder truck, the new quid replaced the old tower ladder one-four-seven. We negotiated a contract with a vendor to purchase the old truck for eighty-eight thousand dollars. Looking for approval to sell the truck for that value.
Can I agree?
Chief, tell us why, because we're getting questions about why you're switching from SUDs to pickup trucks for cheese vehicles. Just tell us why.
When you go to a fire, our component gear is exposed to our citizens for the fire, and NFPA is requiring us to keep our gear separated from the cabin of the vehicle. By going from a pickup truck, there's two reasons for that reason. It separates the occupant from the gear, and also we're required to put more and more equipment in the vehicles, and we're trying to pick up as a better means to store and use that equipment to make it accessible.
Thank you, Chief. I have another question. So, is this a new vehicle?
It's a new vehicle, yes.
So this is a new vehicle, which we approved in the budget. So why are we voting on it again? Because we're voting on the bid here, not the amount of money.
The vehicle was purchased through New York State contract. However, what was in the budget did not include these custom add-ons. That was not part of the New York State contract, so we're approving this purchase through the vendor.
I read it, you're right, in a little bit. The amount of money we budgeted for the vehicle and all the add-ons was in the budget. So the reason we're here is because the vendor was not approved by the board. The amount of money has been approved as part of the budget, but not the vendor.
The vendor, right, is not part of the New York State contract, therefore you're not approved.
That's correct. Vehicle is part of the contract, and it not get approval for that from the board. But the add-ons, we have to go to look outside vendor, and that is budgeted for, it's in the budget, it's approved back April. But the vendors were not approved.
I'm just trying to make life simple for people.
It's so much.
So if we said we were spending a hundred grand on a new vehicle, soup to nuts, two months ago, and approved it, why are we doing this again?
I'll tell you why, Ryan. I talked to Peter's office, I'm nauseous, and they want to calm me down. It's because we did not approve the vendor. It's not the money, it's the vendor has to be approved. Right. The truck is off the state contract, but the truck did not come to load quickly, add-on equipment that's needed. And so they found the equipment, some of it off the state contract, but the vendor that installs it is this vendor, so they got pricing.
So I have a question. So do we have a procedure for off the?
It's not off the, it's bid.
Right, but you're using an outside vendor that's not off the state bid.
It's two separate things.
Right.
Not for the vehicle, it's the vendor. The vendor is installing equipment on the vehicle.
So it's the labor to get it on the vehicle.
Exactly.
It's still off the?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make life simple. We already had it.
It's not important, but it did not have to be bid, was the vehicle itself was in the New York State contract. But the equipment, some of the equipment, installation of that equipment had to be approved.
Sorry, the question I have is something goes off the state bid. Usually it has a procedure, you have three bids.
Three quotes, yes. We received the first one, we get three quotes, and then it goes to the board for approval.
The shorter statement would be, all of this adheres to our current procurement policy, correct?
That's correct.
I think you probably would have.
No, I love everyone, yes. Get it, it's counted.
We need to floor this.
I wish you wouldn't told me that shit. A week ago, so I wouldn't have gotten my salt some. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Wu.
Good evening. So tonight, I'd like to talk about a couple of items. Item number four, correction of errors. This item pertains to a property located on Big Road. This is the property that's being constructed at the moment, the hotel. This property owner went to the Nassau County IDA and received a, was granted a pilot, a twenty-year pilot program for their taxes. And so that agreement did not make it to the village somehow. This agreement was in place as of January of 2018 to start this year's nineteen-twenty taxes. So the tax rule included taxes for this property, and the tax bill went out. The property owner paid both the taxes and the pilot portion. So in effect, doubled it. Per discussion with the village assessor and village council, it was deemed necessary to a correction of errors, update the tax rule, refund the taxes that were paid. We are not allowed to assess taxes on that property. And so we are requesting the authorization to refund the portion of the taxes that this property owner did pay.
That was taxed throughout the village.
So we received a pilot payment in lieu of the taxes.
So we didn't lose anything, it's just we built them. We got the money as a pilot, not as tax.
That's correct. We got both the tax payment and the pilot. So we're refunding the taxes and updating the tax rule for that purpose. Item number five, once the board approved the permit for parking field seven N, you know, village staff sold all thirty-five permits. There's currently a waiting list. We currently have nine individuals on that waiting list. At the time the agenda was finalized, there were only, I believe, three. But that number has increased to about nine. So this item is asking that the board authorize a resolution to add an additional, I guess it's up to the board, eight to thirty spaces to that parking field to allow for more sale of those. And Peter, you were?
The draft resolution would increase the number from thirty-five to a minimum of forty-three and a maximum of sixty-five as determined by the village administrator.
Item number six is a write-off in the amount of four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. There was some damage to a village property, a light pole, to an accident. The billing was sent to the insurance carrier in the amount of two thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. They reimbursed the village two thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents, and they discounted some depreciation. So we're requesting authorization to write off the balance. Those are the key items I have. If there's any other questions?
Mr. Francisco?
Ma'am, I have a number of items on the agenda this evening. Items number twenty-one refer to the water department. Item number twenty is for additional engineering services due to the project included, the well-known rehabilitation project. This is a project that was started last fiscal year. I expanded the scope of this project by adding in electronic controls. Some additional engineering work needed to be done to accommodate that change. So this is a request for the additional engineering services for this project, which is still within the budget of the initial scope of the project. Item number twenty-one is for this year's rehabilitation, well rehabilitation of system one number ten, which is a different revol site. This is to request authorization for our water consultant H-two-M to do the design, assist us with the bidding and construction administration, and everything else it needs to happen with this rehabilitation. Item number twenty-two, last meeting, the board had authorized me to go out and find a surveying firm to assist with, to do some duct surveying along the route of the third track construction project that's going in the village. The original proposal last meeting was for, I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but I needed additional funds. And that's item A, is a transfer of funds for additional funding. After getting pricing for this, I needed more funding. And item number B, I have the letter B, is to engage Carmen Dunn to actually do the work. So for lump sum payment of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. I believe, yes, we authorized twenty thousand?
Thirty.
Thirty thousand, and even additional ninety-five hundred dollars. We will be submitting this to the Third Track Community Reimbursement Fund in order to get reimbursed for the cost of this work.
When are they ready to start?
They are ready to start now. There's hardly a day. They estimated two, three weeks.
Have the residents of the building notified?
Well, not yet. We're waiting for the approval from the board, I'm sorry.
I said everyone should be notified. Will be.
Yes, we will notify the TOA. It'll be approved tonight on the agenda. We can post it on the webpage or on the website. Item number twenty-three, engagement professional services. We currently use the services of a consultant right now, who's actually our certified water operator for our water facilities. At the time, we are, currently we're engaging him through H-two-M. This agreement is to engage him directly with the village in order to, for the village to recognize some cost savings in terms of paying, rather than paying the additional service fees to our water consultants, we save significant amount of money and engage him directly with him. That's what this agreement is. The next six items are water bids. Twenty-four is for water meters, called water meters, to replenish our stock. Number twenty-five is the same thing, to replenish our stock of fire items that we keep on hand. Number twenty-six is a capital project. These are two roofing bids that we are awarding. One is for the wellhouses at Clinton Road and the water department. Wells ten, that should be ten and eleven, that's ten and thirteen. And for the municipal service yard offices at DPW yard buildings east and west. Twenty-seven is our directional drilling contract. We're renewing our contract with Allen Cable. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, work uniforms and project soda for the water department.
I have a question.
Yes.
What size? What size?
Threads.
Threads.
The first size, I actually. Chief Francisco and I have spoken about it.
Okay, fair enough.
They are being painted. They are being painted.
Will they come in bang?
We keep all the property of climbing on it.
Yes, we do.
Do we do that now? Okay, because remember when a man came into, just give it a routine checkup or something, and he damaged it, and then started flying?
Yes, that's correct. That was a Bosie's. Yes.
So we do, we are aware of that?
Yes, there's a significant number of private actions in the village, Delphi, some of the apartment complexes, Gorgon City Hotel, just been affected.
Would people record a little bit of private or village? Do we have a record of where the all around happens?
We charge, just bill. Yes.
Is that it for today?
That's all we have for now. Any questions?
DPW is?
Do we charge them a Western NASCAR rate? Or do we charge them hourly?
We charge them hourly, which is almost the Western NASCAR. Yes.
Any further questions? And the village administrator?
Mayor Trustees, thank you. I want to draw your attention to item number eleven this evening. This is actually a call to the board. As we recall back to 2017, the board supported restoration of the Rainbow Army for White Clinton Rainbow Place in the range of town. And the Rainbow Division has been very appreciative. Since then, the away donor, Freddie Paul, Mr. Francisco, with his department, the Parks Department, have re-landscaped today, the lighting, new concrete. But during the initial restoration, a gentleman named Angelo of ADB and Sons, that's his company, Irrigation Army, he was so boycotting transformation, he wanted to donate irrigation. But while I heard about that a few years ago, we weren't ready for this last piece of the puzzle. So we tried to track him down. Everyone recalled the conversation, did a donkey. The donkey was, so after two phone calls, I was able to track it down. I called him. He met myself, Steve Francisco, and Steve maintains the area with Tom, over in Parks. He met us about three o'clock. And he called me today, he wants to start at eight-thirty tomorrow. But he called me, texted me, and I want to support this. It's a great donation. He wants to be part of this legacy and restoration. He's really passionate, so very enthusiastic gentleman. I want to thank him, and his sons, by the way, for this donation.
That was wonderful experience, bringing that back to life.
It was wonderful.
It does look wonderful.
And item number twelve, Mayor Trustees, the restoration of the outside of the Stewart Bus over the Gorgon City Transit Station on Seventh Street by the library. It's something that was obtained through our historian, Mr. Belmer, and I received three quotes, but some additional information is forthcoming since the sun agenda. I'd like to have this with one, is there objection? It'll be serviced on the August agenda for vote.
Can we do that right now?
If, without objection, the item be removed from the calendar. Without objection, unanimous agreement.
Thank you. That is all.
Maybe after the straight-up systems installed, maybe we can all make these connections.
Actually, I was going to suggest that a future meeting be breaking there and do that. It's very.
Yeah, that would be really.
I'm going to avoid meetings. And if we both give a citation, we'll give us.
This time, are there any questions or comments by the trustees?
Ma'am, I'd just like, I'd ask Mr. Dufresco of all of the projects that his department's working on, if you could just give an update, please, I appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee higher. Give the computer one second here. It's too low. Exactly, quick answers. Yes, there we go.
So what were we doing this weekend? This is a review. Mr. Dufresco?
Yes.
This is review, what is going on currently in the department of the works?
Yes, I can, I can speak about it if you'd like. I don't have any pictures at the moment. But we are thick in the middle of the dating season right now in the middle of summer here. So if I did have pictures up there, I have a picture of the second road parking field that was just finished and completed. This lot was a challenge, because there is no, there is no alternate parking for the people in that location. That lot is in a pretty remote area. It's on, those don't know, it's on the corner of Old Country Road and Clinton Avenue. The lot is finished. It was a challenge. We did have to do half of the lot on different sides at different times. It was a little chaotic with the traffic. But the lot is finished. It is completed. We added additional lighting, and it looks very nice. The water tower is completely finished. Water tower demolition is completely finished. There was a significant amount of tower. So the demolition of the tower was complete. There was a significant amount of concrete that needed to be removed. Some heavy equipment was brought in. They had to jackhammer most of the concrete. It was pretty hefty work. Most, all of the concrete is now removed from the site. The site's been prepped, and we are ready to start construction on the site, the water tower. Stewart Field, the Stewart Field, the parking field north of Stewart Field. We, the street crew has done some clearing over there. We planned with some heavy equipment, it wasn't, we weren't able to do it by hand. But we did enough removal that we're going to be able to survey the site. And once we were able to survey the site, then we'll put a plan together and we can present it to the county in terms of what we want to do at that site.
Wait, when will that be submitted to the county?
The survey will be done this next week.
What's the service schedule? How would the plan, which is minus some details?
Sure, we might do a plan, yes.
For those who are uninitiated on this, we have, we have these, some property from the county, and it is in the back of, as you drive past Stewart School, there is parking in front of those athletic fields. Well, now, this is going to put thirty, thirty-eight spots, or it's a decent number of spots in the back. There's an entry for you. They are going to put in some historical information about the energy build parkway that's back there. And there will also be thirty-eight, at least, or less than range, extra new parking lots for parents to park and use, get into those athletic events with kids. And I think that Mr. Johnny did a lot of work on that. And I think that the supervisor was very, very accommodating and gracious. And so that is a big thank for us there, because parking was terribly tight.
That's correct, ma'am, thank you. In addition, we've done some electrical upgrades in the sewer department and the water department. The Meadow Street sewer pumping stations, we have upgraded all the electronic controls in that facility, similar to what we did last year to the Skida Valley Sewer Pumping Station. The controls that we had in the facility at that time were very old. We weren't able to maintain parks from them. So this was a significant upgrade and a much-needed upgrade. The water SCADA system, another project. We are updating, the SCADA system is the brains of the water department. This controls all the operations in the system and controls the communication between the water system. We're in the middle of updating, we're in the process of updating that system. That's a pretty significant.
You should probably pu, publish a time design for the committee, um, pamphlets or something similar to let everyone know how their dollars being spent, because you're really applying an awful lot on the infrastructure of the village, tremendous amount, very, very busy, all the departments.
Yeah, and, 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 uh, put those slides wherever they're available on, on our website so people can see them.
All right, so there are no other comments on the trustees? No questions? And so before, we are going to move to citizens' comments on agenda items only. Please raise your hands so that I can recognize you to come up to the podium and, um, we're raising them, remember, on the agenda items only. Um, Mrs. Traxler, no, Mrs. De Lacona.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and board of trustees, thank you for, uh, I know. I'd like to, uh, talk about, oh, it's Maureen Traxler, Bill from, uh, 105, we have property. And I just wanted to talk to you, number twenty-two, and I wanted to thank the board and most specifically, I wanted to thank, uh, Joe D Francisco for moving quickly to find a land surveyor to do the work along the third track line. Uh, it's been very important for us in the West, actually, now, I'm sure, please. Um, so I want to thank you all for moving quickly because I know last time we were at a standstill with four companies that were not able to serve. So, um, that's great. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Joe, for keeping in touch with me during the last few weeks on that. Uh, thank you, um, to trustee MacRanos for asking when work would be started because that was my question tonight. Um, I'm glad to hear that they're going to start in, uh, two or three weeks. I'm curious to know if you have any idea how long it's going to take because I know you have a whole stretch there from the West all the way going to, um, I guess into the States also, um, along the track line. Uh, because I have been, uh, aware that the project is slated to start, um, with the initial work on the wall, which will be on that property line, um, with the track, uh, the long and the railroad. So I'm just curious, uh, will we be able to complete this work? Will we be starting and wanting to working with the railroad to know where, uh, their project is going in?
The, their, the surveying work is starting immediately.
Good, good. Great, great.
And it's going to take approximately two, three weeks.
Oh, take two, three, it's not start two, three weeks. Oh, then that's even better. Thank you, Joe. And thank you to the board and trustees, thank you for, uh, really staying on top of this, to the West, I know, and for surely in the States too, that are on the railroad tracks. Thank you.
Anyone else? A question on the agenda items? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the max of June twenty, twenty nineteen meeting? Uh, trustee, do you know? A second? Trustee, uh, what I need? All in favor? Or just...
I'm staying on that.
All right, so then that, would that pass seven, zero? Okay. Now under the new business, we will turn to the formal agenda with three appointments subject to board trustee approval and a, a reappointment by, uh, myself, the mayor. We, this is to appoint as library trustee, Jermaine Franco, for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, replacing Gloria Marbury. To appoint as environmental advisory board member, John F. Riley, for a term to expire April third, twenty twenty-three, replacing Edward Hiney. To appoint as architectural design review board member, Rosario Palante, for a term to expire April sixth, twenty twenty, replacing Daniel Fabrice. And to reappoint this village historian, William, William Belmer, for a term to expire April sixth, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty. All in favor? I mean, uh, may I have, uh, uh, can you approve that motion for me? Trustee Foley. Uh, a second? Trustee MacRinos. All in favor? So that passed seven, zero.
Mayor, if I could just make one comment.
Yes.
Eight, zero.
Eight, zero.
Yeah, eight, zero. I just wanted to make one comment. I wanted to personally congratulate Jermaine Franco. Uh, the reason for it was is that, uh, I know there was a new resident who moved into town in June of nineteen ninety-five and, uh, she turned around and said to him, why don't you get involved? Why don't you get involved with the community? Uh, it's been a long time. So Jermaine, thank you very much.
I'm not sure we would vote for her, I think.
Yeah, you should have said that. That's why I waited to say that until after the vote. Now, now we know who to blame.
Is Joe Ryan here, any chance? How about Rosario Palante? Are you here? Uh, here's Rosario. Rosario is a newcomer to Garden City and he is, uh, very interested to get involved in the community in a meaningful way. And he has already spent one year on CBRAT, which is, uh, a challenge. And now he's moving on to the A D R B and we are so pleased to have him.
Thank you.
All right. Is Billy, uh, is Bill Belmer here? Stand up, Bill. Um, while we have a new trustee at the library, I want to have Gloria Marbury stand. Gloria, how many years did you serve as a library trustee?
Fifteen years and seven months.
Thank you. Thank you sincerely for all of your dedication and you were very, very dedicated to the library and still are. So thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
On the side of twelve, through, I think, thirty-four.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion of deputy mayor, um, and, uh, trustee, literally, all in favor? And so that passed, you know? At this time, we will turn to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Uh, please raise your hands so that I can recognize you. Do this approach the podium and we have four minutes to speak. Uh, once again, non-agenda items. Mr. Oros?
I'm Paul Oros, twenty-eighth row. Um, I try to keep up on, uh, things going on in the village. You know, at some point, like, when they will come to some meetings. What I'm seeing here, I know that we're putting up a protective fence around St. Paul and the, the article here, it says, uh, install inside the fence area the equipment for the stabilization of the building. I get to hear what that is, what are they doing to stabilize the building and how much of that is for detection?
Well, uh, what's going on, they're just preparations for stabilizing and, uh...
Preservation.
Preservation, learning what is in the building and what it would, what would be involved and are proceeding forward to, uh, make a decis, decisive decision on what's happening with St. Paul wreck project. So this is an interim step. Uh, it was discussed in my column. I, oh, you have it with you? Okay, good. I gave you a heads up that that was going to start and, uh, we have a...
My question was, what, what does that entail? I mean, but what to what? I, I gave this, I gave this, uh, a summary list of...
They had to jump in. The, the short answer is we don't know yet. So the, 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 um, construction manager, CNY, Esther Really, and we've talked about this in, in, in prior meetings, but they have to go in and really assess, um, all of the decay and the toxicity within the building. And we have to start the abatement and the stabilization and closing up the roof and the windows and all those good things that we want to do.
And the mold and any else that...
Right, exactly. Now, so before we start that, of course, they're going to come to us with a plan on exactly what it is and exactly how much it will cost. At this point, though, before they even get in there, first, we have to start really protecting the site in a proper way, uh, you know, uh, and, uh, you know, at the moment, I think we know it's, it's not ideal the way those police barricades are. Now that we're going to have actually people that are working and equipment and things like that, we need a proper site fence and that's what you see.
And what do you think that they'll be able to evaluate and fill up with some sort of game?
Well, step one is putting the fence around it and then they'll start getting the building. I, I think, um, you know, at prior meetings, we've, we've talked about, uh, the drone, um, survey, which happened May thirty-first. Um, so now they'll start taking the information that they gleaned from the drone, uh, survey to start targeting specific areas in the building that are going to require further, uh, study and analysis. So, um, they're going to go in and, you know, hopefully within a month or so, we'll, we'll know more.
I, about a month or two ago, I presented the board with findings of, uh, previous investigations into, uh, and which is a laundry list of, of things that need to be done.
Yes.
The building's over a hundred forty years old. There's nothing in the building that, that comes up to today's code standard.
Sure.
Nothing in the building. From paint to walls, to staircases, to, to access, everything.
We know that.
At that time, they quoted a price, which was ten years ago, about fifty million dollars, which is inadequate, inefficient to really stabilize the building for any...
Fifty million dollars you talked about. But this is, this is just to stabilize the building. This is just to stabilize the building.
We're not restoring the restoration.
No, that was that study, you stabilized the building?
No, 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 it wasn't.
For no future use. They, you just stabilized the building.
No, it stabilized the building, but not... But we, we've got a problem with, um, you know, the roof is extremely porous, um,
there's lots of water getting in and, um, unfortunately, it's decaying even more rapidly. The, the longer we let it go, it's, it's kind of a, um, you know, a snowballing effect of the damage. Um, even from what the engineers observed originally, I think eighteen months ago to now, um, the, the damage to the roof and subsequent structure is significantly worse than, let's say, three years of, of decay before. So it's, it's, it's actually accelerating. The decay is accelerating. So, um, this is the first step of...
I can just imagine the difference between what it was ten years ago to what it is.
We, Will, I don't know the number and the scope of what, look, all construction is about the scope, right? Everyone's, uh, projects at home and you know what this is about. You pick the expensive tile, you pick the cheap tile, you re-route the bathroom, you don't re-route the bathroom. There's lots of scope discussions that are going to happen. Right now, we're not even into that. We are just in a place where we want to stem the tide of decay and while we come up with those scope discussions, because it won't be likely, right? The whole community really has to come out and talk about what we want to put in there. Um, but in the meantime, we can't keep watching it fall over. Um, it's been a, a, you know, a policy of passive demolition for the last, um, you know, thirty years and this board is finally doing something about it. I think we should all, you know, be really happy to see some activity there, uh, because we're taking real steps, uh, to save that building and not watch it fall in front of our eyes, so.
That's why I've been waiting for, waiting for you to make a report to us.
You and me both, man. I don't think...
Where, 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 when we get it, you guys will be the first to know. Information, you'll be here, you'll be there.
Absolutely, I'll be here too. I know. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Parker Truvey, and members of the board of trustees. My name is Patricia Cunningham. I reside at sixty-seven Hilton Avenue here in Garden City. I'm here this evening as a spokesperson representing Garden City Casino. Regarding the, um, joining me also are several members of committee that has been formed by the committee, by the casino, to discuss the issue which I am about to speak to. I'm going to read and I'll read quickly because I want to stay within four minutes and I do have some allergy problems. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening regarding the license agreement between us for the Garden City Casino, related to the six-month extension that you granted in March, which will expire on October thirtieth, twenty nineteen. At that time, the village put the casino on notice that a request for proposal process, RFP, was in consideration. Since April, we've been trying to meet face to face with trustees in order to understand what it is the village is looking for and when an RFP process will begin. We thank the four trustees who have met with us and spoken with us and we invite the other four trustees to meet with us and discuss any concerns they may have. At the last board trustees meeting during the Cathedral Nursery School agenda item, there was brief discussion about the casino building. It appears to us that there seems to be some misunderstanding about the use of the casino building, which is why we are addressing you today in this public forum. The casino is maintained and operated at no cost to Garden City taxpayers. We are a five oh one C four organization. Although we are called a club, this is a bit of a misnomer. We are not like a private club at all. Anyone who lives in the village of Garden City can and may join the casino. We are not an exclusive club. In fact, we're very similar to the Garden City pool. By way of background, in eighteen ninety-five, the Garden City Company divested the land bounded by the L I R R, Sixth Street, Cathedral Avenue and Hilton Avenue to the village of Garden City. The original charge to the governing board of the casino was to manage the ten-year-old clubhouse, tennis courts and surrounding grounds. These were to be operated as a park for the benefit of village residents. As one of the oldest institutions in Garden City, this is exactly what we've been doing for one hundred and twenty-four years. There's no doubt that the casino adds to the quality of life to not only the approximately two hundred families, two or members, but all in Garden City. It is a unique and special asset to the village. A few points as to our fiscal operations. As in the case of the pool, our membership fees are our largest revenue source. Our two courts and chlorine pools both require constant and expensive maintenance. Outdoor facilities are not used during inclement weather, but the expense of operating them never takes a day off. Facilities occasionally need large capital improvements, for which we set aside a portion of our operating budget each year. We've not asked the village to fund capital improvements. Our membership fees are set annually and again, as in the case with the pool, are price sensitive to the marketplace. We believe that because we are run as a nonprofit organization with volunteer management, we are able to operate more cost effectively than a private for-profit tennis company or governmental agency. Board directors of the membership of the casino are responsible to care for the building and grounds as well as the tennis courts. The main structure of the casino was built in eighteen eighty-five. We take our fiduciary responsibility for the care and safety of this one hundred and thirty-four-year-old Stanford white building very seriously. Although in the past, our stewardship of the structure has been criticized, we'd like to point out that we have complied with everything that the village has asked us to do in a timely manner. We've also made a number of capital improvements in the last decade. We look... improvements in the last decade. We look forward to partnering with the village in order to take the best care possible of this beautiful and historic building, and we welcome village inspections. We are neighbors, enthusiastic tennis and bridge players, and house members of the Garden City Casino. We'd like to continue this long and successful partnership. We respectfully ask the Board of Trustees to renew our longstanding agreement with the village of Garden City, as we believe that we are the best option for the residents of Garden City for this village asset. We believe that in carrying out the 1895 mission set out by the Garden City Company, we are in fact the highest and best use of this historic gem. We also understand that as part of your due diligence as village trustees, that if you decide that RFP process is required, please communicate with us as soon as possible. And let us know what it is that you believe you will be looking for and what most likely time table will be. We invite the trustees, the mayor, and any interested Garden City resident to contact us for a tour of the casino. We think you will agree that this special institution deserves a place not just in Garden City's past, but in Garden City's future as well. Thank you for your attention and for your time this evening. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Penola.
Brian Penola, 56 Kingsbury Road, Garden City. I'm speaking on behalf of the Garden City Historical Society. Evening, mayor, trustees, and members of the village staff. First and foremost, we want to thank you and congratulate you for finally getting the temporary protection plan at St. Paul's underway. It's really, it was really good to see, and we're looking forward to the windows and the openings being closed, hopefully as soon as possible. Secondly, I'd like the minutes to show that I'm distributing a photographic report of the archival materials in St. Paul's to the trustees and the mayor right now.
What is this?
This is a photographic report that the Historical Society prepared on the archival materials that remain in St. Paul's. If you take a few moments, 10 seconds, 15 seconds, whatever you like, to peruse it, I'll show the members in attendance what we're referring to are the numerous plaques that are still inside from when St. Paul's was in effect, the stained glass windows that are in the chapel, including one that was made by...
Excuse me, this is not a presentation.
The brick tile floor. This is part of my presentation. I have four minutes to speak.
No, I'm here to speak to the board, not to give a presentation.
That's not correct. Nowhere is the municipal walk, not going to address the guests as well. Like, the mint tile floors, the cast iron on the stairs, the brickwork that's around the building, woodwork, woodwork, chandeliers, fireplace surround, the chapel itself, the organ.
Almost done.
Mr. Penola.
Just about finished.
Brian Penola.
And the plaques again.
Okay, Brian Penola, listen to me.
Yes.
Okay. That is not in keeping with what we do and things that we carry out here in these meetings, so I would ask you to stop doing that right now. If you have a basic question?
No, I'm finished. My point now is...
What is your...
Now that we're moving forward with the temporary protection plan, we want to be sure that these items are not damaged or destroyed or removed intentionally from the building. These items are the property of the village of Garden City and our residents. So what do we like to do? You have a construction manager. They've already ordered the fence. They've done the drone flyover. We'd like to meet with them in conjunction with the village, review the scope of work that they're proposing, to be sure that it includes the proper protection or storage. I see that you've mentioned the stained glass windows in some of your mayor reports. So we just want to ensure that this material, some of which is irreplaceable, most of it contains a tremendous amount of history of our village, is properly handled. So that's all we're asking. We're not looking to cause the village any harm. We hope you appreciate the offer that we're making. That is our purpose.
Thank you for your comments.
The Historical Society?
Anytime, sir. Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Wait, I don't think the formative is up?
Yes. It is, it is.
Could I get a response, yes or no?
No, I can't give you a response right now. Okay?
Okay. Well, again, thank you very much, everyone, and we'll be in touch.
Are there any further requests? Yes.
Kathleen Norrell, 4 Maryland Avenue.
Bring the microphone and close the channel.
My kids tell me I talk too loud all the time. I want to hear it. Kathleen Norrell, 4 Maryland Avenue. After reading Town Defense Councilman Tom Musfarella's mailing that I received, I guess it was earlier this week, was very interested about the water situation on Long Island and for dioxine, or however you pronounce that. And in this mailing, it mentioned that New York State is altering grants to communities. And in that mailing, Garden City, West Hempstead, and two others were mentioned, I was just curious, had we approached the state asking about that grant? And will we?
Mr. D. Branscombe?
Yes, we did apply for that grant back in, I believe it was the end of January. As far as I know, at this time, we did not receive the grant.
Do you have any idea when?
I don't know why. We're trying to find out why we aren't included in the grant offerings to the other water districts.
So Joe, could I just ask a question? So other municipalities have applied, and they didn't receive the grant?
Yes, the state announced last week that, I believe, six or seven municipalities or water districts did receive grants.
We did.
And we did.
Who are they for the dinner?
West Hempstead, I believe, is one, Garden City Park, if I'm not mistaken. Water Authority, Western Mass, I believe, did also. South County, yes, yes.
What was the dollar?
It was a cap that had $3.5 million provision.
Have you a copy of that?
Is there any way to follow?
Mrs. Howell, the person saying... These include Franklin Square Water District, Raylawn Water District, the Town of Hempstead's East Meadow Water District, Town of Huntington, Van Hassett-Latney Water District, Hoist Ave Water District, Fort Washington Water District, South Farmingdale Water District, and West Hempstead Water District.
What's the point? Would we try and...
I think the point is...
Well, I'm just going to say that, because after reading the mailing that I received from the councilman earlier this week, it does say some of money in Garden City, as well as some of these other communities.
We applied, but we didn't get it. We applied, we didn't get it, but finding out why we didn't get it.
Or...
And they don't have to tell us.
There is another round. They'll be announcing it September.
Oh, okay.
It's possible.
Thank you.
Grace from the College of Gilbert Hall. Good evening, trustees. Nice to see you all again. We've asked a few representatives from the Cathedral Nursery School to attend to this meeting, as we wanted to follow up on a statement made by a few trustees last month, expressing their willingness to consider an extension to our lease if we could demonstrate that our need would be short-term. We wanted to update you as to the status of our search for a new location. As we reported last month, during the course of the last year, we have visited and revisited over 25 sites. Unfortunately, many would not be appropriate for early childhood education or are not interested in housing in nursery school. Fortunately, we do have two very good prospects. We are in active discussions with them about how our school could fit into their location. However, both would require construction and our renovation. As you know, many families and families choose Cathedral Nursery School for their children, and as a result, our enrollment is quite high. We are hoping to find a location that is both appropriate for an early childhood setting, as well as allows us space for each family that is already enrolled in those. We are now focused on determining the scope of the construction needed and how to fund it. Navigating this as a nonprofit is inherently challenging, as we remain told that we would not qualify for any bank loans. Our parent committees are hard at work tackling these areas with the administration of the school. We will be returning in August to provide you with a more detailed update as we progress. Seeing as nursery school registration for all of the schools in town will begin this fall for the following school year, we are asking that our request for a one-year extension be placed on the agenda for a formal vote in August. We would greatly appreciate your assistance in granting a one-year extension. This time will allow us the necessary time to finalize our location and perform any repairs without risking the displacement of children. Thank you.
Good evening. It's Richard Correa, 197 M. Broke. Just trying to understand some of the grumblings, and I even heard comments of inappropriateness that Mr. Penola spoke about, you know, an effort to assess, you know, the historical artifacts that are still within St. Paul's, hoping to get a sense of why there seemed to be a general pushback on that item as Mr. Penola was speaking.
To be honest, we don't have that much time. Okay? That's the blunt answer. Okay, the reality of it is, is that, again, this situation with St. Paul's has been going on for a long...
I was going to say, how many meetings have you...
So it is, but no, we're focused on that. And the bottom line is, is that over the last couple of years, this board basically has decided that this is the elephant ruling that we need to address. So what happened was, is that we've gone out there, we've hired people who are considered to be experts in the field, of which Mr. Penola even complimented us when we picked people that we picked. We have a process that we're going through, and what happens is that we're going to work with them to stabilize the building so that this way the village can not only stop the deterioration of the building, but it then gives people the opportunity to have the choice. The reality of it is, is that this village has given so many mixed signals to previous boards as far as whether or not to do something, to tear it down, not to tear it down. But the bottom line is that we have to get to a point to where we stabilize it. As a matter of fact, if you had come possibly to the point of those presentations, the people that we hired, somebody in the audience says to them, "What's the first thing you should do?" So the first thing we should do is stabilize it, stop the decay. So that's what we do. So what we're going to do is we're going to have the professionals go in, we're going to work with them, they're going to give us a game plan, they're going to come, give us a presentation, give us an idea, and show us the extent of the damage. And then what we're going to do is that we're going to look to stabilize the building itself. Where we go from there, that'll be something that we'll move forward with. But the reality of it is that we're going to go through that process. Okay?
No, I appreciate that. Not having the scope of work in front of me, would that process include some sort of, I would assume it would include some sort of, you know, cataloging or indexing of...
Of the... I think that's why we're kind of all signed, because he's kind of stating the obvious and things we've talked about.
Well, it's not personally. You just said there's an accelerating deterioration.
I know. I'm getting upset. I'm just saying, you asked why would we like kind of helping and helping, because he's kind of restating the obvious. He kind of does it a lot. No offense, Brian. You come here and you make it sound like we're going to put a wrecking ball in there, and we're not. And we've gone through, like, multiple, multiple presentations. He even referenced the fact that we have a company looking at removing the stained glass while any work goes on so that we don't damage them. And we're trying to take extensive measures to restore the building, but he does these impromptu presentations. I think he likes to enjoy, you know...
Put personalities aside, there's a 25-year track record of nonfeasance.
I know.
And there's concern...
And we're changing that.
No, and that's wonderful. It's not a personal matter.
It feels like you get a little personal.
Because...
I was like 15 when these guys were doing nothing.
There's no need to impugn an individual. There's just concern that these items are being catalogued and accounted for. We don't know the scope of the...
Because we've not been to many meetings, obviously.
We don't know the scope.
We don't know the scope.
We don't know the scope either. So the bottom line is, we're going through this in a step-by-step process, okay? I mean, this is amazing to me, how when people sit there and then they say, you know, "Why don't you know this? Why don't you know this? Why don't you know this?" Okay?
No, it's like, it's like passive...
I'm sorry.
What's your first name?
Richard.
I'm not saying why don't you know this. I'm just saying I don't know it. Richard, you want to go out? This is the really simplistic. You want to go buy a car? My question to you is, what kind of car do you want?
An Audi.
Oh, I'm sorry. Why not a pickup truck? Why not a...
It's cheap.
Okay, but my point to you is, is that what we're doing is we're getting all the facts, we're getting all the information. I respect Brian. He's passionate about what he does. What I don't respect is when he comes up here and does things like he does tonight, or he comes up and he gives simplistic answers, like, "You know what? We need to close the windows. So you know what? I'll volunteer. I'll go in there and I'll sign any form." Fine. When you fall through the floor and you get injured, or someone dies in there, okay, because they go in there unprepared, or the wall collapses on them, okay, oops, doesn't work. Okay? So the thing of it is, is that we understand that for so long, nothing has been done. It's frustrating for us, because regardless of whatever the end result is, what we have to do is, we have to stabilize the building. That's what we're doing now with professionals. When we know what the plan is, you will know what the plan is. There's no hidden agenda. Okay? And we're going to sit here, and we're well aware of what's inside the building, more than aware.
You know, I think you could have a little more confidence in us that we would not be destroying anything valuable inside of the building. That's not... We would not do that.
Yeah, and again, I'm simply asking...
You know, we've engaged in the stained glass window. It's rightfully expensive. However, we are pursuing that. That's taking care of, taking care of valuable things in the building. Of course, we would do that.
Mayor, there's just, there's discussion of heavy equipment, there's discussion of accelerating deterioration, track record of 25 years. The question is, you know, will there be the special consideration paid toward cataloguing and preserving the site? It sounds like you're saying yes.
We've already said, so we've said yes. What do you want us to do?
Literally for about 18...
What do you want us to do?
That's very much...
Yes, we're saying yes.
Yes.
Switching topics, thank God. Judy Courtney, I have two, I think, quick questions for recreation, this latest recreation meeting. One is, do we have an update on pool membership numbers?
Thought this might have helped us.
I thought you thought.
So I asked the school a few of some numbers, and right now, we're about, I'm not comparing to last year, just to budget, because that's really the measurement.
Ow, you don't have last years?
I don't.
Okay, okay.
Just to budget, which is what the measuring stick is. But I think if you look at last year, there might be a hit in categories. I'll try to have that next time. But we budgeted about $1.4 million change, and we're about $1.3 million, we're talking about $68,000 shy of that.
That's... Is that, that's total revenue, not membership?
Just family memberships. So it's all broken down, but all in all, we're about $9,000 off the low budget. Our memberships are about 56 less school memberships, total school memberships in all categories. So we're close, but we're not there.
All right, thank you. And my second related question is, can someone give me an update on where we are with the search for the new head of parks information?
Well, it's, it's.
I don't even know that, so.
So we did, we did put out, disposable ad, put out an ad for Google. We received over twenty-two resumes from around the country. It was compiled down to about forty-five shortlist. And out of that, they were tiered into three categories. This week, we conducted interviews with the best-fitting candidates for that. And next week, we're going through it in order to present what we feel, feel the candidates to the board for a presentation probably post Labor Day for in base interviews. That's what we're doing.
And who will be involved in the interviews themselves?
The entire board.
The entire board. All right, thank you. Is that right? All of you will interview, or just there in selection?
There'll be supplementary.
We know what you do, it's their own job on the interview.
All right.
Thank you. Do you want else? Yes.
Hi, Maureen Delapona. I just had an observation and question regarding the St. Paul's discussion tonight. The observation is, we are talking about two different things. We're talking about the stabilization, and as Brian was talking about, about some of the significant artifacts and features that are inside. So, as far as the stabilization is concerned, I think that's a wonderful thing that you're doing. I haven't got to say that I have, just in the past couple of weeks, been looking back at minutes of board of trustees meetings from two thousand and five, I don't know if you were there at the time, but the discussion was about stabilization of St. Paul's, hiring Einherne Yachty and that kind of thing. I mean, this goes back fourteen years ago. But I'm glad to see all of you going to review what we can do to stabilize that building. My concern is, and here comes a question, is that some of the features that Brian pointed out, particularly plaques, and I know from having been in that building a number of years ago too, there were two murals in the dining room of, I can recall, one was of a cadet in a uniform from one of the early days of St. Paul's. I'm curious about whether those items are still in there, first of all. And second of all, if they are in there and are going to be preserved, I would like to know if this board is going to inform the community about those items, and are they still there, and are they salvageable, and what we'll be doing about it. So that's my question to you tonight.
Are you asking if you would save them and keep it secret?
No, 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 I'm just asking. I didn't say anything about, oh, wait, I didn't say anything about, I didn't say anything about keeping it secret. I asked if you were going to inform us. Because sometimes you do things and if you don't inform us, which is fine, because that's your business. I'm just asking if you would.
Anyway.
Maureen. Maureen. When the presentations were given, eventually.
Last July, I was there.
Okay. One of the things that they talked about was the multiple items that stood out within St. Paul's.
They had great presentation about the history.
They had an excellent talk. Bottom line is, they understand what the building is. They understand what's inside the building. So the reality of it is, is that what condition some of this stuff is, I don't know. But again, first thing we have to do is abate it, and then what we have to do is we have to stabilize it, okay? So when they come to give us a presentation and we have an opportunity to do those things, as we go through the process, we will then be in a position to say, what is the condition of some of these things? So again, we're totally aware of this, and if you remember at that presentation, the person who gave the presentation was passionate about the interior of the building. He was passionate, applied because they have a history of working with buildings like this. This is why we chose them.
I am curious then, of the, I guess it's four public presentations, probably totally six plus average, at what point did you feel like we were gonna go silent on information with you?
I'm not saying that you're going to go silent.
You actually did. You said several times, like, a lot of this stuff is just said so it gets in the paper. But I, but I'm curious, because, you know, we'll tailor future public presentations to address this fact. So you made several statements that you're hoping that you'll let the public know, because we don't always let the public know. So I'm asking, all those hours of public presentations of literally experts in the field of restoration and history of St. Paul's, when, can you pinpoint a time when you thought, they're just gonna shut off the spigot and we're not gonna know anything about this project? What point do you have of the public presentation?
No, I'm not going to say I can pinpoint any, any specific time, but I can say that past boards have not had very good track record of keeping in touch with the community.
So I'll ask you this final question, excuse me, just a second. Has this board here ever, do you feel, has been withholding St. Paul's information from?
I can't say that you've been withholding St. Paul's information from.
Really, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much on that. But I just do want to say that as a preservationist and person who has been involved with St. Paul's and with the Historic Society for many years, I just am concerned and I don't see why you wouldn't accept help from an outside group who has some expertise, a local community group who has some expertise, at least even to talk to them about the type of work, the scope of work that's going to be happening inside St. Paul's.
There will be many, many times in the future for the entire community to contribute their ideas and their feelings and their positions about the scope of St. Paul's. Let's be honest.
The only thing, Maureen, excuse me just a minute.
Ryan is one of many people, and so are you. This, this structure and everything with it, and as he stated, belongs to everyone. So we're not gonna go ahead and do anything that isn't completely vetted and discussed in public. Like, if you guys are worried or something, or Brian wants to come back up and do another impromptu presentation, we're probably okay at this moment. There's no wrecking ball on the way to St. Paul's. Everybody wants to preserve its history and all.
Right, now, especially with this installation. Maureen, excellent. Maureen, excellent.
Maureen. We picked a hopeful return to do this work for us. I have a lot of confidence in them. I don't think they would dream of damaging or not taking care of what they come across when they travel through that building. Have confidence. They're good. We are confident in them. And let's all just take a step backwards and relax about this. Some good things are going to start to happen in that building. And I, I look forward to a very positive situation, and I look forward to a lot of community input. And so just let's have it. I'm thrilled that the fence is on. All right, we're working with very good quality people.
Absolutely.
Maureen.
Thank you.
Thank you.